It is 5:00. We have a quorum, and I am declaring this pre-budget planning workshop open. First thing on the agenda besides a call to order is citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. We'll move on to item three, pre-budget planning workshop. We'll be discussing the draft FY '25 budget. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little housekeeping. Please turn off your microphones when not in use so we don't get a lot of feedback. So we're going to go over the FY '25 budget. We'll go over all of the funds at a very high level. Today, we're going to mostly focus on the general fund, which, as everybody knows, is the workhorse of all of the fund budgets, other than water and wastewater. So for our new council member, newest council member, and as a refresher to some of my older council members, we'll do an introduction to municipal budgeting. We'll talk about the overall draft budget. We'll go through each of the fund budgets and all of the departments within the general fund. Again, we're going to focus today on the general fund. So let's talk about tax rates. We have a little thing called Truth in Taxation that is a rather complex worksheet on the various ways to calculate the taxes. The de minimis rate applies to municipalities such as ours, less than $30,000, and it is essentially what is the no new revenue rate plus $500,000. So it's going to be about the third or the fourth decimal point in the tax rate. Our no new revenue rate is essentially the same rate that would bring, is the rate that would bring in the same amount of dollars. So, for example, our current rate is .4994. We had about $800,000, actually, no, $500,000 in additional valuations come in. If we did a new calculation so that we did not raise any additional money, according to those valuations, that tax rate would probably go down to 4974 or something similar. The maintenance and operation portion of the tax is just for that. We call it MNO. It is only for maintenance and operations. It does not take into account the debt. Cities have a 3.5% cap before you have to get voter approval. So if this council had the desire to raise any kind of taxes, 1%, 2%, 3%, up to 3.5%, you could do it at the dais. Anything above that will require an election, and we'll talk about that in a little while in the calendar. I am not proposing any other tax rate than the current tax rate. Interest and sinking, which you'll hear called INS. It sometimes sounds like INS. It really is INS. Depends on your Texas twang or your southern twang. And that's the debt portion of the tax rate. The scary portion of that is that there is no cap to that. And so while the legislature kind of puts the kibosh on you, on the ad valorem, on the maintenance and operation portion of it, the scary thing is that there is no caps. So it sort of forces cities to go into debt into what would otherwise be short-term maintenance and operation obligations. So remember that when you go vote. Fund accounting. Sometimes feels like Enron accounting. I say that. My finance peeps cringe when I say that, but sometimes things feel like they're double counted. So, for example, when one fund transfers to another fund, that revenue feels like it's double counted because it counted as revenue being received here, and it's counting as revenue being received here. This fund should have an offset, but sometimes this offset is split into multiple funds. So it is very much a coconut shell game on how you manage the money. I like to call them spaghetti bowls, and we take a wide-tooth comb and straighten out the spaghetti bowls. Bashrop had a lot of spaghetti bowls mixed in, and you will see, as we go through some of these accounts, you'll see some of the numbers change quite drastically because we were intentionally separating. There was a lot of transfers going on, especially among the engineering fund. It was being charged to departments who didn't even know they were receiving a charge. So we straightened a lot of that out this year. That is our current tax rate, .4994. Of that, .1962 is debt. So why do we do an annual budget document? It determines what kind of services you can provide. It ensures that you're adequately funded and that you can make your payroll and your debt service. And for the council, it sets priorities for spending. We have city council focus areas that all of these budget pieces will feed into. So there's a couple of ways municipalities do budgeting. Zero-based, priority-based, line item, and then we have a hybrid budget. You guys received, for the most part, you received the line item budget. You received every single detail. I did that on purpose in case anybody had any questions about what are the crazy expenses or what was out of kilter in one particular department. But we really do a hybrid. We go through line items. We go through the tax goals. I know that right now we're at .4994. I know that. I know that our residents are facing down the barrel of a potential 10 cents with EMS service, any potential ACC as the Bashrop ISD begins to have that discussion, any potential debt obligation the county may issue for the public safety building. So there's a lot sort of coming down the pipeline. And then any additional room that any one of the ESDs have may have a detrimental impact to our residents within the city that are also impacted. So I'm always cognizant of what is it that we absolutely need, and I really try to work within the bumpers of the existing tax rate. And then what are the community priorities? Obviously, we keep hearing about a recreation center. And really, my position, my recommendation to the council is if the residents really want a recreation center, have them put it on the ballot. If they want to raise the taxes, to raise a $10, $20, $30 million building, then let's, you know, have that discussion at an election level. We, as a city, 3.5% is not enough to fund a recreation center from a just cash basis. So we'd be taking on, we'd be taking on some debt that would have a long-term impact to the tax rate. So we're in the draft of the budget. It feels like we're in the beginning. That group out there will tell you they're tired of hearing about it. They're tired of talking about it. They're tired of looking at it. But they're here in case you have any questions with any one of the budgets. So this is a little bit backwards because municipalities draft the budget, and then they calculate the tax rate. That's how we get ourselves into trouble. That's how we get ourselves presenting budgets to city councils, which before that limit, that ceiling was 8%. And so you get into cities that are 50 cents, 60 cents, 70 cents. Those are very heavily burdened cities. So this really is one of the first discussions the council should have, is what do we want to do about that tax rate? And then draft the budget. Because that gives them bumpers on what are you asking for? And then we really, really split the hair on needs, wants, and priorities. We publish notice. That's going to happen next council meeting, not the 9th, the 23rd. We hold our public hearings in August. We adopt a tax rate late August. If there's any desire to adopt a higher tax rate, then we will call the election. The election won't happen until November. So we're essentially adopting a bare minimum budget that the law says you have to adopt last year's budget unless that election passes, and then you can go to the higher budget
What's the deadline to adopt the budget?
It's on, you have your worksheet, September 30th essentially, because the new fiscal year starts October 1. Our calendar says we're going to adopt the budget on 9/17.
9/17, thank you.
It's on the, it's on the very last pages of your PowerPoint. So overall summary of the draft budget that you received. Revenue notables. No new tax rate. There is $825,000 in property and sales tax, which is really, for a city that is growing as fast as we are, that really is bare minimum. Most of the growth that we're seeing is outside the city limits. Those development agreements of years ago are coming, coming home to roost. And we had an overall increase of $250,000 in hotel occupancy funds. Now, I'll remind you, this year, we had overstated. We went to 4 million. We came down to 3.5. The new estimate is 3.725. So expenditure notables, that 19% in health insurance costs. Tanya is awesome. Tanya's the HR Director. She has negotiated a rate of zero or minus three. Now, there's some caveats that come with that, and we'll talk about that in a later slide, but when you received your packet, there was a 19% increase in health insurance costs. We did have a decrease of 12% in workman's comp, and I expect that to get better as we get our safety training better in line and not just sit folks in front of a video to watch. But our folks have been great, knock wood. Nobody's gotten hurt, so we did see a decrease. It includes the addition of two police officers and an allowance for a restructure of the organization. We had some rate studies that we'll talk about in HR. Police was one of the highest percentages of off-on salary. At the time of this budget also, we had no COLA plans. I'm going to show you in later slides with the health insurance savings how we may be able to pass on a COLA, should the council decide to do that. And then there is a large municipal court judge increase, and that is because we did a salary study, and she was off-kilter, not just by a little bit, but almost double. So, and the associate judge. So that is also programmed in the budget. And that ate up, you know, 875,000. So the organizational chart, you will see a recent addition, and this is Assistant to the City Manager. Viviana was previously within Development Services as Customer Service Manager. We have moved her to the City Manager's office, so Michelle and Viviana will assist Andres and I, as Andres handles the heavier load within Public Works and Development and leaves me with police and fire and everybody else, and finance. He doesn't want to have to deal with the money. Any questions thus far? That was the easy stuff. Okay. So there's the general fund summary that's in your, that was in that super line item budget. So the general fund, even though that looks like a giant separation, it's, it's not that much. It's about 130,000 or so. No, 250, 250, yeah, or so. But we are required to submit a balanced budget unless I have a plan to draw down from fund balance, which was the plan last year. We did have one-time expenses last year that are showing up, and we'll need to have a mid-year budget adjustment before the council on the 23rd.
The total, total revenue, is this MNO? Yeah, it is, thank you. Is that a no new revenue rate? What tax rate is that at?
.4994.
Okay. Oh, so not no new revenue?
Not, not no new revenue. I will arm wrestle you. Councilmember Kirkland asked that because that no new revenue, so there is about $1 million or so within that rate. We will have the final rate on the 25th of July. So that tax rate, if we go to a no new revenue rate, would probably go to 4.8 instead of Water and wastewater, again, that looks like a big spread. Not that big of a spread. Yeah, no, it's nothing. And we'll talk about some, a little bit of what is in some of these funds. Curtis is on vacation today, so water and wastewater is our next conversation. Hotel occupancy tax, again, the split looks really big. The numbers, the, the values over on the axis are separate, so again, it's a balanced budget. The expenses in the hotel occupancy tax, though, we're going to have to talk about because there is $165,000 planned for a downtown master plan, for a Main Street master plan. We're not sure we're ready for that yet. I think we still need to get some alignment from the businesses. We need to seat a full board, let the board have some experience, and then move on into some sort of master plan. Michaela's new. I think there's a lot of things we can do internally and save ourselves, you know, 165 Bashrop Power and Light, they're doing much better this year. The programmed transfer to the general fund of $600,000 is still programmed in there. I had told the council last year and the year before that we really should work on decreasing the transfer. And so if there's any funds left ever, we should work on decreasing the transfer $50,000 a year until we're good. The water and the wastewater fund, their transfers to the general fund have been decreased. He really needed equipment and things within the fund itself. We do have some salaries that are shared salaries for water and wastewater that are doing other things, but for the most part, there is no large transfer to the general fund. Bashrop Power and Light does have a $600,000 transfer, down from 750 at one time.
And the idea is to slowly get rid of that transfer over time?
Yes, yes.
And those are the general fund, those transfers were the things that funded community stuff? What were those transfers?
No, they're transfers into the general fund to help balance the general fund.
Or to just help balance it? Gotcha, when we were...
These are enterprise funds, and so the enterprise funds always are quote-unquote cash cows and always help supplement a general fund. But when you do that, when you do that over a sustained period of time, BP&L has fund balance, don't get me wrong. But when we face a catastrophic noapocalypse and we're facing, you know, dire repairs, LCRAs came in and did the repairs, and we were slowly paying LCRAs over time, but it's nice to be able to know that if we have major catastrophic events, we're able to handle some of those things.
And that way, all the other departments are self-sustaining as much as possible.
Fairview Cemetery, this is another one that, this fund is not normally this large. However, there is a $650,000 transfer from the general fund programmed into this. It's not in the operating expense of the general fund, but rather, it's going to have to be a one-time loan to the cemetery from one-time expense, and that is so the cemetery can finish the columbarium and the cemetery improvements. Once the columbarium is in place, they have enough revenue to pay us back. And so it is, it is considered a one-time loan expense, and this is also a revenue-generating fund.
How do we handle maintenance, grass, you know, mowing the lawn in the cemetery? Is that done with Public Works or is that separately in the cemetery?
He, there is one person assigned to the cemetery, charged to the cemetery, and then he gets supplemented by Public Works and Streets and Drainage. The, the columbarium project was approaching $1 million, and we've taken a lot of that work in-house. John and his company are doing the streets and drainage portion, and Curtis and his company are doing the water and irrigation portion of it. So we were able to shave a giant amount off, and most of the cost is to the engineer-architect and the actual columbarium purchase itself.
Sylvia, just for clarification, it's John, their department, not his company? I don't want the public...
No, it's his company.
Is it? Well, don't, don't want the...
The company that he keeps.
Don't want the public to...
Oh, okay, good, good, good. Yes, you're right. The Streets and Drainage Department.
Thank you.
That John has had, yes, yes, thank you. You have a department now, John, or a company.
It scared me for a moment.
Street maintenance funds, again, this is a fund that is now funded out of the sales tax that was reduced from the Economic Development Corporation. Within the street maintenance fund and some of our other funds, one of the policy discussions we're going to talk about at the July 9th council meeting is going to be capital expenses and how we handle those. A lot of our, a lot of our budgets have capital expenses mixed in, in the operating funds. And so, for example, in the police department fund, one police officer is $185,000, and that's because one vehicle is $100,000, and the officer is $85,000. Back during COVID days, we had a shortage of vehicles, and we were forced into leases. Those leases are very, very, very expensive, and we are being double-dipped. So in other words, I've got to pay the lease, and I'm also paying into the vehicle and replacement fund. That was a function of supply, not being able to have it. But we are going to scour the funds, and a tax note probably makes more sense, a short-term tax note of five years. We would save a significant amount of money among all of the funds. In John's fund is some significant capital expenses of over $200,000, but that still doesn't get him everything that he needs.
So the 2.9 in revenue here, this is exclusively from the, the street tax?
Yes.
So we had 800,000 in addition to that?
Yes.
So where did that go to?
We did not make that transfer from the general fund this year.
Okay. What is it being used for?
I'll show you when we jump into the general fund. Debt service, you, you shouldn't have any more money in this. You transfer what you need to pay because your tax rate is calculated specifically on debt. So there, if there's any extra money in here, we did the math wrong. That's a bad thing. Capital improvement, again, these are some itemized details that, that will be in your packet. These are just old places. There's nothing significant planned within this particular fund. All of our other items are buried within the water wastewater, and, yeah, typically it's the water wastewater fund. So here we go. General fund. These are all of the departments within the general fund. These are the departments that the private sector does not normally handle. I don't have anybody knocking down the door to take over the library. I don't have anybody knocking down to take over the parks or the fire department. Well, fire might be a little bit different. So these are all operational expenses that it takes to run a city. So we'll start with administration. There is administration overhead. All of the departments pay into the general fund for things like electricity and the buildings and the insurance and blank, blank, blank. So here's the overall general fund. We have the addition of the staff member in the City Manager's office. We have reduced all outgoing transfers. Again, we talk about cleaning out that spaghetti bowl and straightening things out. That is where that $800,000 transfer would have come out of. And all of the other funds have sort of negligible increases, with the exception of police. That's a pretty significant increase between the two officers, equipment, the CAD, we'll go through those itemized expenses here shortly. Fire, community engagement, that's a reduction. Main Street had been funded out of the general, completely out of HOTFUND, which is a no-no. We had to bring some of that back into the general fund. Additionally, the outside community support agencies are embedded in that particular line item. And those support agencies were flatlines, and I'll show you that here in a minute. Those are, there's a $14,000 net increase if everybody got what they asked for, with the exception of the Bashrop County first responders. I did not see a submittal for them, and Alisa, I will defer to you if they have submitted anything since then. Fleet and, Fleet and Facilities is a newly created department. This took a sweep of all of the other departments of what they were doing, most of what they were doing in building maintenance and auto repair, and the addition of some staff. So we had a staff member move from Development Services. We swept some from Public Works, and the janitorial staff is now housed out of Fleet and Facilities. Engineering is also another one of those clean the spaghetti bowls. Engineering was charged through a variety of departments, and so it was very difficult to keep tabs on what was what, what expense was what, and to what project it was related to. We've now streamlined that. That is the Director of Engineering and two project management staff. The Director of Engineering position is still vacant, so we will end up using some salary savings for third-party engineers until we can fill that position. We did, in Finance, add a capital finance person that would really track the money on all of our CIP projects and also our grant projects to make sure we stay in line with our grant deadlines and don't miss any reports. Our IT department grew. We had the addition of two GIS staff, that's geospatial staff, plus the addition of software and hardware that gets very expensive. Utility billing, pretty much flatlines. And then Park and Recreation is also a newly created department that was carved out of Public Works. And this 13, 524 is not a correct number because we've removed, like Park and Recreation had a number, Fleet and Facilities had a number, except they were embedded in the general fund.
So we got, do we, where does severance come out of? City administration?
No, severance is absorbed into the department budget itself.
And do we have someone that helps us, that we contract to help us with our bonds and helps us manage our bonds?
Bond sales, yes.
Yes, we do have someone that does that.
We typically put it out on the street, and we receive bids. We've used Capital Securities, we've used Frost Bank. I think Frost Bank was the more responsive at the last one. We'll, we'll be putting the bridge out on the street very soon.
And they manage it all the way through? How does that work?
No, they just manage the sale. They, they put it out to acquire the best rate, to accept bids for the best rate.
Okay. What I was looking for long-term, like, do we have someone that helps us make sure that we're on task to, for payments and obligations and things of that nature?
That's this capital finance person we're adding.
Okay, got it.
Because previously, no, it was up to each project.
Yeah.
And so, you know, sometimes it was one engineer on a project. Often, it was four engineers on a project, and it was group think, and so...
Yeah. I have one more question. Okay. Oh, what was my next question? I can't remember. I may have to come back to it.
So department costs as a percentage of budget, obviously, police, that big blue block, sorry, Vicky, 31% of the budget. Between police and fire, that's 41% of the budget. Almost half of the budget goes to police and fire. That, that is pretty typical. There are some cities who 100% of ad valorem tax goes to police and fire. Those are also collective bargaining cities typically, but... Hmm? A collective bargaining city?
No, no, I mean, this is...
Oh, for the ad valorem portion, yes.
Yeah, I mean, this consumes all of our ad valorem as well.
So from an overall perspective, so we'll start with city administration. So the overall transfers out were reduced. We don't have a transfer out to HOT. We don't have a transfer out to IT technology. We don't have a transfer out to any of those items anymore. And there's no transfer out to streets for $800,000. In the City Manager's office, we reclassified the Customer Service Manager to the Assistant Two, and we adjusted the salary for the Assistant City Manager. Legal is just one of, one of several cost centers. If you look at your org chart, their last three average salaries was $449,000, but that is split among some of the orgs, especially when they do water wastewater work or they're doing right-of-way acquisition. Those are charged to projects, or those are charged to those funds. So within the city administration org, that's $200,000. Public safety, two additional patrol and police, the restructure of the department. We programmed funding for cadets without using salary savings. So what she was doing previously is if she had a vacancy, she would fund a cadet. The cadet would finish, they wouldn't be ready to be on the street, so she's still short a person with an inexperienced person. So she's not ever really fully staffed. It looks by head count that she would have been fully staffed, but she's not fully staffed. And so the overtime budget was still high. Capital expenses, again, we really have got to talk about her cars and the things that are within the police department budget because it is a very expensive proposition. Mayor Breton Kirkland, I would venture to tell you that if we can straighten out the capital expenses, that transfer to streets can come back. That is how big, the general fund alone transfers over $800,000 to the vehicle equipment and replacement fund, which is, if you think about that and you say that out loud, we have a lease that we're paying for that really should be replaced at the end of five years, but I'm still contributing into a verf for a variety of things that maybe may or not, may or may not be programmed if I have an emergency expense sort of thing. Fire at $65,000 in equipment, a defibrillator, and I'm not even sure what else, Stone. Municipal Court, there's that increase in the judge's salary and adding the associate judge's salary. Finance, the new position reclassified from the engineering department, so it was really just moved from a different general fund category to finance. And again, this is one of those difficult ones to track. Jimmy Campbell is in this position. She was charged a little bit to here, a little bit to here, a little bit to here. Very difficult to get our arms around how this goes. Community engagement. So again, we talk about the Main Street Manager... So again, we talk about the Main Street Manager having to come back into the General Fund. The Main Street is Historic Preservation and Business Retention. So the Historic Preservation piece is a HOT Fund item, but that's the only fund. The rest of it comes into the General Fund. And then all of the increases in the library were, they were outside of personnel. They are third-party cost increases. What kind of third-party costs?
Biblioteca, funny.
Come on up.
So Third-Party Cost would be our Integrated Library System. That's Apollo, so that cost went up. We also have a counter, people counter, that went up. But those are the kinds of things, the vendors that we have services from outside of the library and outside of the city.
These are the community support requests that are embedded also in Community Engagement. So last year, there was a request of $129,000. That was approved in addition to $16,000 of in-kind. This year, the request is for $143,000 with only one of the entities requesting in-kind dollars. So it's a 14, 950 from last year. Engineering, this is two, this is the first year we have two full project managers. They had been, I think, only portion funded because we hired them mid-year. Any professional services, we're going to use the new IDIQ, mostly from salary savings of the department engineer until we can fill that position. And then the goal is that those IDIQ contracts really be project-specific, so they should have a funding source associated to them. It shouldn't just be charging engineering for the sake of charging engineering. And then these items were previously funded out of other budgets. Development Services paid a giant chunk of engineering before. Thank you, James. Fleet and Facilities is a brand-new department, so nothing to compare from last year. Although, and I, if you recall, I told the council every year that we have a sweep. Most of the sweep was coming from a savings in building maintenance and fleet maintenance. That was just because we didn't have time. We just never got around to doing it. And so, yahoo, we have a savings of $1 million at the end of the year. No, we didn't do something that we were supposed to do. And we have things like big leaks in Development Services that wrecked havoc in James Cowie's office for a while, or ACs that are really on their last legs, that when we talk about equipment repair and replacement, that's the piece that needs super attention. I think we can do better with our vehicles. And then Park and Recreation, so again, brand-new created positions. They're being swept from Public Works, some were in Streets, I believe. The proposed budget this year is $100,000 for park maintenance. And then there's $185,000 in improvements to Riverfront, Delgado, the Fireman's Park, Piccon Park, Riverwalk, Mayfest Park, the Splash Pad, and Kerr Community Park. I've asked Terry to take a look at the Splash Pads and talk about the recirculating pump. Curtis is out, so upon Curtis' return, we will talk about what the cost of that is. That will probably come out of the Water Fund because it's an absolute impact to the Water Fund when we are, when the water's just going down the drain and not being recirculated. No. Ouch. So here's the health insurance adjustment. So when we went out to our current provider, we had a 26% increase right off the bat. We went out to RFP, and we had a 19% increase from same said provider. We had an alternate provider, oh, I didn't put the date. Tanya, when did we receive? Yep. And that was a 0% increase, although we must have a 12% increase programmed next year. So they told us that already. We're going to start you at zero, but you got to be aware of a 12% next year. And then it'll go to minus 3% if we bundle our vision and dental. Yes, the draft budget, I'm sorry, minus 3%. It'll, our, our current cost will go down 3% if we bundle it all together. Yes, she was wearing the Flo costume or whatever the Geico costume was. So that 19% increase was $310,000 approximately across all of the funds, with 214 of that being in the General Fund alone. And so, just to give you an idea, the health insurance that we provide for the staff is a good plan. Most of the insurance providers are moving from a PPO to a forced HMO. We're going to be no different. We'll baby-step our way into that. We do pay 50% of dependent coverage, which is pretty standard. We had originally looked at a reduction of 35% of dependent coverage, but, you know, I don't know that the, the employees are looking at me like, you did what? As we were analyzing the number to try to incorporate a COLA, how could, you know, how could we have done one and not the other? Well, the math never worked out. We gave, let's say, 1.5% COLA and only did 35% dependent coverage. It didn't work out. The employees ended up losing money, so we didn't even go down that path. So, if we were to do a COLA, the 2.5% in the General Fund has $197,000 impact. So what I explained to you was the prior slide showed a $214,000 impact to the General Fund. So we have the ability in the General Fund, which is primarily the fund we're talking about, and the other funds also have the ability to absorb at least a 2.5% COLA. CPI is 3.2. I'd love to get to 3.5, but, and, and that's a, that's a discussion for the council, and we'll see when the final appraisal roll is received on the 25th. The employee enhancement, the benefit enhancement from '25 to '20, this is, has been a concerted effort as part of our benefit enhancement. So last year, we made the leap from 6% to 7%. And for those council members who don't know our retirement rate or those staff who don't know our retirement program, it is a defined contribution, defined benefit. All of our staff can run a retirement scenario per year and know how much you're going to receive. Our annuities are stable. It is a state fund. It is not like a 401K. I cannot borrow against it. I cannot take it with me. If I leave before my retirement date, I lose all of the city contributions toward it. It is an asset on my balance sheet, but it is not an asset I can borrow against. HR went through compensation studies, and we showed we were 7% below pay in police, 4% in fire, and 3% among the General Fund categories. If we were to move to a 20-year buy-in, because that's essentially what you have to do, it is $100,000 impact across all of the funds. One time. Years of service in a TMRS city. You receive service credit for other types of work, nonprofit, government, et cetera, et cetera, work. You'll receive credit, but it's not a one-to-one. So what's next? We have presentation from the support groups on your calendar for 7/9. We have presentations from the community assets. That's from the HOT Fund on 7/9 or 7/23. The final appraisal rolls come in on 7/25. We'll do some final tweaking, but my proposed budget needs to be filed with, with the City Secretary on that date. That is a proposed budget. That is not the budget. So filing the budget scares people. This is not at all, this is not final, this is my first pass, and this is what we're discussing today. We still have a, on the calendar, a joint meeting with Visit Bastrop on August the 13th. That's my birthday, maybe we move the date. We also have our final tax rate discussion as a discussion item. We're deliberating what those, what that tax rate should be set at. And then budget deliberations at the council level begin on August 21st and 22nd. That is what is programmed in the calendar. And the financial policies and purchasing policies are reviewed and/or amended on August the 27th. We have our first tax rate public hearing on the 10th of September, the second tax rate hearing on the 17th of September, and then we adopt the budget 9/17. But we have until 9:30 to adopt the budget. And then the fiscal year begins October 1. Any questions?
Have you all put the water hose down yet?
Sylvia, one question I had, and it's on the line item, and I don't, I don't even know the page because there wasn't a page on it, but it was a savings for the credit card processing fees?
Yes.
From $71,000 to $5,000?
Yes.
How did we do? Do we go out for bids? What happened on that?
No, so the city had been absorbing, post-COVID, we'd been absorbing the cost of those credit card transaction fees, and we put them back on the customer. Council voted at some point last year, yes, to reassess that.
Sylvia, on the COLA, on the COLA increase, now that we've gotten that somewhat of a windfall, if we go to this other provider, do you feel confident we can bring a 3.2% or at least consistent with the CPI COLA increase for all of our employees?
I will sure try. What I'm going to ask the council today is, I, I need two of you to help me solve the capital project, the capital issue with vehicles. It's a dirty problem. But, but, I mean, there's light at the end of the tunnel. We just have to, we may have to take a big bite of it at one time.
And the capital project relative to vehicles, is this because of the lease practice that would undertake? Thank you.
Sylvia, I was looking around today, and I, I found the CPI at 3.3.
That was. Latest numbers. Yep, 3.3.
So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't Googling wrong.
Okay.
And then. I remember the other question. So when do we, when do we have our annual audit?
They just finished their audit. Those normally start in January. Laura?
So September? Okay.
January. Supposed to start, supposed to start after September 30.
And do we get that information, or is that something we would have to ask for? I don't recall. What is that?
Yes, Edie.
Oh, is that Edie?
Sorry, Edie, we got a, we got a. Yes, hang on. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so, sorry. After still working with the auditor, we were obviously started four months behind. Fiscal year-end date, I'm sort of behind, but I got sort of with them, and they're, the accounting firm merged in the middle of our audit, so they put us behind. So we are hustling to get this thing done. They have like one or two questions for me that I have to answer, and then I anticipate in the next week to have that audit, or week or week and a half to have the audit.
Okay.
We have been working on that feverishly, and then budget also came in, so it was a whole lot of things coming at me, but I have, I will have that to do ASAP.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, do you anticipate us having to go to a voter approval rate? Under our current constraints?
I'd sooner quit my job.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm going to tell you, in the last probably 10 years' service as a city manager, I've never once increased the tax rate. That I can, like.
So I just want to point out to all of us on council that I put a lot of time last year into understanding how these tax rates work and how they intersect with our property values. And so, the summary, the, the net summary is, any person that's lived in a house longer than a year in Bastrop is likely to see a 10% increase in their city taxes under this plan. And that's just, that's just fact. And the reason why is because we went through a massive increase in valuations a few years ago, and they only reflect that valuation increase 10% per year. So most of our homes are worth, you know, three and four and five and six and $700,000, but they're only taxing us on some number that's half that much. And then they're increasing that number by 10% every year that they're allowed to tax us on, and this is a state law thing. So the valuations for our homeowners, if you've lived in town for a couple of years, are likely across the board to go up about 10%, which by leaving the tax rate fixed means that everyone's going to have to pay 10% more in city taxes. And I just wanted to say that out loud.
Did you do that math for sure?
10%? Yeah, it's pretty easy.
Okay. We're going to do the math real quick. What's your address? So, 461-221, do you know what you were, oh, here we go. So you actually had a reduction.
Yeah, probably not.
So. Yeah. So 475 to 461, so, let's see, you paid. Where's your tax bill? Uh huh. So you paid 2303 to the City of Bastrop on 461-221.
So because mine went down, it intersected that 10%.
Anybody want to give me theirs? Yours will stay the same. You want to give yours? Kevin?
Kevin's is going to go up.
110 Lincoln.
But it is in a peculiar situation, they increased the valuation of the land by such an extreme amount.
So I, I would just say, I would just say be careful on saying 10% across the board because that may or may not be the case per, per property. And then the other thing is, yes, it is a static tax rate, but the increase is because of a valuation increase at the county assessors app, appraiser, yeah.
And, and the purpose of the no-new revenue rate is to account for that increase so that some individuals would feel it, some would see lower, and it would, in effect, be zero on average for everyone. And with the, you know, last year, the, and I did the calculation last year with every council member's home plus every, just like staff, like city staff, like I just like had 20 houses and created the spreadsheet and looked at the valuations and how far they were below their, their maximum valuation, so it looked like there were multiple years of 10% increases till they got there. Last year, there was a, a very small increase in the maintenance and operations amount that was taxed by the citizens. When I say very small, I want to say it was like 10 bucks a month or, you know, it was very small. But then, because we commonly and are proposing again to leave the debt rate the same, because of that increased valuation, the, the taxes for all of those 20 homes that I picked went up about 8%. up about 8% in that year because of, it was the 10% increase in the valuation times the fixed tax rate. And so, um, yeah. So anyway, that was just what I observed from last year, and then, you know, what did we do with that? We projected that debt towards fixing the bridge. You know, that was...
So your, your, your property tax was $2,300 to the city of Bastrop?
I think that's, yeah, what we saw.
So that would be $184 per year. Yep, 15, $15 a month or so to the property owner. Obviously, if the valuation is larger. And had we not decided to fund the bridge, we probably could have done a rollback this year, or the no new revenue rate this year, but the bridge, the bridge debt is programmed in that one line.
So that's based on residential and not commercial?
That's residential.
What about, do you factor in commercial at all?
I can...
I didn't pay attention to commercials, so I don't, the rules might be identical, but I just, I just don't know what they are.
Do you want to check a commercial property?
No, that's good.
Okay. And so, um...
I guess on commercial, you don't get the, the 10% step, you just get whatever they set your value at.
Not 100% when you're in Greece.
Yeah.
Um, in the back of the PowerPoint are a couple of links. One is the TMRS. You can compare cities, you can compare any city to Bastrop. It'll let you do Bastrop and then two city comparisons, so please go look at that to check our, how we compare to other cities, and we're, we're almost there. And then the other one is the Moody's. When we issue debt and how we issue debt and the weight of our debt, what our rating is, and why it's really important that we do our reserves properly, that we have reserve policies, it's really important to do our financial policies, it's really important to pay our bills on time. I mean, we're, we're in good standing, we're in very good standing, and I see cities that are, you know, almost equal debt and M&amp;O rate. I don't ever want us to be one of those cities. But interest rates the way they are, we're not in good position to be refinancing anymore. There was a point in time, five years ago, everybody refinanced, and you gave yourself more room, and it was equal too, and you could do all these great things. We, that ship sailed past us pretty quickly. We did refinance some things, and we have some things that are going to be falling off, but by and large, not a whole lot, so... And I don't mean to depress anybody, but the staff is here if you have any questions on the line item budgets.
Well, on the reserves, you mentioned to maintain our Moody's ratings and all that stuff. It does seem like we have very high reserves. Do we have room in those reserves? Or are they where they need to be in order to keep our rating?
Some of the funds have higher than normal reserves.
Okay, I assume that might be the case, so...
I will, I'll check, and I'll bring that back. Well, that was the hardest funds. The other, the other funds aren't, uh, aren't difficult. I mean, the hot funds, you're going to have to make a decision on the policy of, of, you know, the master plan. The water and wastewater fund, he's got, just equipment and maintenance that is necessary. We are in the process of going through an impact fee study, so this budget does, also does not take into account any new impact fees and things, because those are restricted funds anyway. I couldn't use those funds to pay for any of this stuff. What else? Edie, did I leave anything off? Laura, did I leave anything off? And I really want to thank the finance staff. We have been using Clear... Thank you. We've been using ClearGov, and I think the three of us are without several chunks of hair on our heads. There is a different software called OpenGov that would not require so much manipulating, because anytime you download into an Excel sheet and have to manipulate it, the data becomes questionable. But that's exactly what we had to do. We had to just download it all and work line item by line item, and just the general fund alone has about 4,000 lines of numbers.
There was, on the contract funding, from what we got in the draft, there was a discrepancy, just to point out, to make sure, because someone handwritten, hand, handwrote the 167-950, but in the total, that wasn't reflected.
Oh, and, let me see. Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
On the contract fund, on, scroll up, I guess. It's on the, it's on the assets, whereas the historical siding...
Oh, I removed those out of this one because those are going to be hot, those are hot fund requests. These are general fund requests.
All right.
But, so there's a discrepancy, let me see.
Yeah, it was handwritten in, but then the calculation is off at the tot, hot fund total.
Here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And with the 143-9972, um, looks like everyone pretty much asked for the same thing. There were a couple of increases. We're going to discuss that further after they present, I assume.
Yes, yes. And $14,000 is not a, it's not, it's not an insurmountable to overcome. When you see the hot request, you're going to go, I don't know, we need to talk about that one a little bit more.
Also, since we're on that, Sylvia, on the chart at the very, very end in our packet, on the contract for the hot funds, the last column should say 2425 instead of 2324. There, yeah, there you go. Yeah, the propose, yeah, just change the numbers up there.
Alisa, you got that? You guys didn't want to ask about printing or... I thought we were going to comb through the line items.
On the, this is going to the hot funds, this is a line item, increase in administrative services, DMO from 11040, $11,040 to $15,000. That was a 3960 increase. What was...
In...
The line on the hot funds, administrative services, DMO.
In the hot funds? It would simply be a function of an increase in the, from three and a half to 3.7, but let me go look at that. We gave them a...
It would simply be a function of an increase in the...
Edie, were you trying to say something?
I was, but I'm supposed to leave that I didn't want it.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
You answered it, or was it, it was just an increase in administrative services that the DMO was going to pay for the city?
Oh, yes, received from the DMO to the city.
Okay.
When we talk about the hot funds also, and we talk about the visit Bastrop budget, we'll have to talk about the clawback provision because of the overpayment, and we'll have to talk about their funding shortfall or their revenue to expense shortfall that they're in right now, because they'll need to move money out of fund balance to cover expenses.
So Sylvia, I didn't, I haven't like combed through the line item stuff. I did just like went through the major year assessment of it, so I haven't, and we're going to have more discussion.
Oh, for sure.
So there was only so much, you know, time and brain that I could use, but, so I, you know, there, I think there probably will be more questions as we go on. My, one of my, or two of my main concerns was the COLA, and then the benefits. And so you guys have already worked that out, and that cut out half the questions that I had, so good job on that.
And they, they really worked hard to clean their line items. I mean, even today, I was asking Terry Moore, like, can you, where is Terry? Has she already left? I was asking Terry, are you sure? Are you sure? And she's saying yes, and I'm like, but you're in the general fund, every penny counts. Are you sure? Are you sure? Are you sure? So we may come back and say, you know what, these are maybe one-time expenses, the way you guys did last year, to leave the operating budget clean. You gave $235,000, I think, to Mayfest Park. I'm not sure that they've used all of that, so we'll reallocate some of that. And then you gave the museum, the visitor center and the museum, $200,000 plus also for repairs. I know for sure they've not used all of that. Doug's been handling the repairs, so that will also fall back to hot funds. So we'll have some opportunity for one-time expenses that'll come out of this fund to balance these better.
So Sylvia, for clarification, our one-time cost of $100,000 to move us from 25 to a 20-year retirement plan, is that what I understand?
That's correct. It does change our unfunded liability a bit also, well, not our unfunded liability. It changes our overall contribution a bit. So right now, we're at 13.246, something like that. It goes up, we buy our way down, and then it comes back down. So it's a 12-month process, but to answer your question, yes, our contribution rate would essentially fall flat, and 100, it takes about $100,000.
As an employee incentive, that's, that's minimal cost.
Sure. The other part that we talked about in TMRS is really pushing this, is to go to a non-repeating COLA for our retirees. And so the way the TMRS, because it's a defined benefit, defined contribution, when a city passes on a COLA, they make a decision as to whether or not to pass on that COLA to its retirees. Bastrop has chosen that. Some cities choose a portion of the COLA, some cities choose none. The way the calculation works is they go back to your start date, calculate that COLA, and then move ahead. It's not a significant impact. I gave you the information per retiree in your packet. Some received $2 less, I think the most, somebody received was less than $10 less. It doesn't matter to us today, but as we get to be an aged workforce and folks start to retire, that number starts to climb up because it is repeating all the way back to your original retirement date. We don't have to tackle that one this year because it's nominal, or even in the next two years, but TMRS is really pushing its cities to move in that direction. Flugerville just moved there. I'm kind of in a wait-and-see. When you say that to retirees, non-repeating COLA, everybody like loses their mind, but when you see the actual number, it's not, it's not a big number right now, but it will grow to be a big number.
Is that the same as a retroactive?
It's all about the math.
It is.
BEDC, Sylvia. There were two iss, two items that I just, $65,000 in last year to $25,000 unidentified. Unidentified, yeah. There you go. What is that? Yeah, we don't know.
Edie, do you remember what this is?
I'm looking for it right now. I have, we need to scout that EDC budget, and we, we decrease everything, so I'll tell you in just a second.
So you've got it, $65,000 also matches.
So these are sublines, these lines will look to that one. It was $65,000 last year, and I think it's just a placeholder for whatever contract.
It says, for 2024, it was for the insightful report, it was for half of the payment and proposed future training for the board, and but the current year is just for the municipal board training, consultants, et cetera. So there was something that we were paying for that we're no longer paying for in '25.
It was a report that we got a discount, remember? We were paying $49,99 or $50,000 or some amount, and we didn't, we didn't get the deliverables at the EDC, so they just counted it 16%.
On the same page, Sylvia, on downtown lighting, it went from 141.5 to zero, which is amazing, but how, what had happened with that?
We finished the project.
Okay, perfect.
And some of these, some of these projects, these here, they're making a concerted effort to get them off the book. Blakely, there's a million dollars left for Blakely, and Shuren, they're consulting for the sports complex, that's free, $25,000.
Sylvia, and I'm very pleased that we're not taking any more CIP projects, but as, as we go through the year, I'd sure like to get a status on all of our projects on a fairly routine basis, including specifics relative to project management, which I know is a real key issue, timeline, as well as anticipated deliverables. I think that's vitally important as we go through this year, and we're kind of putting a hiatus on taking on more capital projects.
Yeah, I'll add to that. I actually took several days last week looking at what we have online that the public can access, and it's very outdated.
ClearGov?
Yeah.
And I know part of our discussion, it, I'm looking at anticipated efficiencies in, in service, but part of our discussion is consistency as well as reduction in redundancies that we have with various departments and various activities, some with our partners, and I'd like to, to, to see what we can do to reduce those redundancies. You brought it up at several different advisory board meetings, especially DEI, that perhaps some shared communication so that everybody knows what everybody else is doing, so that we can piggyback various projects with them.
DEI or BEDC?
DEI, and I remember a specific conversation about getting information out...
Oh, oh, on the communication piece?
That's correct. Oh, correct, correct, on communication. And then I'd also like to get an indication of what our cost for community engagements have been in the past, and if, are we getting a, a control of that to ensure that we're not expending public funds in a, in a way that's not effective and efficient?
For the folks that applied, or...
Well, for, for our, for our communication piece, we have, we have community outreach programs, and I'm looking to, to see if we're anticipating what kind of costs that we're incurring on that, is a way that we can achieve some effectiveness and efficient, or without reducing effectiveness, achieve efficiency in having those community engagement, because I, I think having our, having our citizens involved and, and apprise of what we're doing is vitally, vitally important, but I also don't think we need to overdo it to a certain extent, too. And I wish I was like Councilmember Meyer and had went through some of the line item things a little bit more in detail, because I know I have some questions later on.
I'll, I'll look you type in on them, because remember, the numbers aren't close. I mean, when the appraisal roll, we're, we'll still continue to receive, the staff will still come and say, oh, I forgot, I needed this, or, oh, I'm not going to purchase that this year after all, so this is, you'll get a balanced budget. It might not be $2, it might be $20, but... Carrie, did you manage shrinking from the fire hose? It was okay, was it? It was okay, was it? There'll be a test on the de minimis rate.
When we did our compensation study, we also, and I'm happy to hear we're working on getting our full certification for a lot of our employees and what do I get? Do we have an idea of what the deficiencies are in our certification or what it's going to entail in us achieving optimal certification?
On the compensation study. So English is a second language because we don't compensate right now for that. Police will be the first department that receives that, but English and then, go ahead.
Okay. Police officers do receive certification pay for the master. Police officers do currently receive certification pay for their advanced certification masters, et cetera. We're going to increase that for bilingual pay. We're looking at what other cities are doing for tuition reimbursement. And also, some cities also pay for degrees that are held. We're doing comparison study on that right now, and we should have those numbers back tomorrow. Tomorrow, Friday at the latest.
Are we lacking in certification across the board that we need to catch up to to make sure that we have a well-educated?
We're looking at, we're looking at all of that. We also pay our water wastewater, their certification pays too. So I don't think we're lacking on that. Some cities don't do it at all. So, but we want to make sure that we're within market with that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, staff, who knows what the de minimis rate is? Okay, so we're going to do another brush. There is a line item on June 9th, according to the calendar. I don't think you saw it on your draft agenda for the community support and the assets to present. So we'll need to reach out to them for their presentation material.
Is that a council night? We're going to start early?
We may have to start early. I need to give a hand and work out.
I hope so.
The logistics. And then, or we can have it on an alternate day if you guys don't want to have it on the council.
We have enough alternate days.
And then the other thing is we'll do another flush of this budget now that we have the healthcare numbers to give you sort of a clear alternative package and then start working with that. So I'll need you volunteers for the capital asset discussion.
From council? Depends on what time.
To discuss the money on the vehicles and the spend and the lease and everything.
If the, if the meetings are in the evening, I can volunteer.
I'll be happy to step up. I know a little bit about vehicle purchases. Counsel, any additional questions for the city manager or for staff relative to the budget? I'm sure we have it all memorized to a great extent now, at least pages one through eight.
So just as a wrap-up, I have a couple of follow-ups. Get the COLA, re- calculate the COLA to 3.3. We're going to talk about the assets. Do all that I can to replace the $800,000 back into the general fund from the streets. Bring back project management and update the ClearGov on capital projects. And then look at redundancies.
Is there anything that can be done or should be done for, say, Agnes Street and Blakely Street? Like, is there anything that we could optionally do that would move those along faster?
So the Agnes Street is finishing up its 100% design. As soon as we get it, which should be this month, we'll put it in front of you for, to go to bid. Once we get the bids, we should be under construction. The goal is to be under construction before December. Blakely is pending a, we just submitted a grant. The grant application for that was due May 31st. We have not received back any word back on that yet. They have to do an environmental study, which is supposed to take anywhere from six months to a year. And once we receive that, then we'll kind of know where Blakely's at. But Blakely's design is at, we just did its 80%, 30%, 60? We just finished it 60, so we're working for its 90. So if we get it, the design back, we could go out and do it ahead of the grant. And just, we just have to see what that looks like. We'll bring that for a discussion point.
Or, or do a revenue bond and pay for it all together with some of the bond being paid for by the impact fees for the second portion of the rural apartments? So remember, the first portion wasn't subject to the impact fees. The second portion will be subject to impact fees, and that's a couple of million, but Blakely right now is 7?
Yeah, 7.5 million. The only way to move that one ahead further is to move away from the grant funding. The grant funding is 2.3 million of the 7.
And does that connect Blakely to Old Austin Highway?
Yes, that connects Old Austin, and we had to rename. So it's Old Austin to Reedway, Reedway to Blakely. So it's a, it's a big L shape, yes. It's that entire, it also has water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure. It's tied up with a whole bunch of items. It affects Correx. So we, once we get the design to 100%, which included all the wastewater utilities, once we get that designed, then I'll bring, come to her and we'll make decisions as to how we move this forward, maybe without the grant or with the grant.
And that's 7 and, 7.5 million with land acquisition or without land acquisition?
Without land acquisition. So we still have to do some land acquisition.
Without.
Without. That's just the infrastructure portion of things. There's also a million that is tied up with EDC. So a million to EDC, the rest of it would be 2.3 for grant, and the rest of it would be on the city.
And the anticipated construction time on Agnes?
On Agnes? So if we, I believe Agnes was a year, year and a half.
It'd be done by end of next year, right?
Yes.
We'll lose the grant, yeah.
December of 25. So they'll be on an expedited construction schedule.
I would also hate to lose that money.
Yes.
Now, the, the other possibility is we do have ARPA funds. We've been saving the ARPA funds for the rehabilitation of the wastewater, the existing wastewater treatment plant. They were scheduled and programmed to go to the transfer lift station, but as we move the project further along, the existing plant rehabilitation is, there might be some savings there to be able to reprogram toward Agnes, but, I mean, toward Blakely, but we're still into Blakely, several million.
Yeah, the ARPA funds are the same, 2.2 million.
Counsel, any other questions for our staff? Madam City Manager, do you have some additional items for us? Well, there we are. I don't see anybody lighting up their mic.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion to adjourn and we have a second. We stand adjourned at 6:18.